That's a good point, Donna. So, Monday evening, the Finance Committee organized a discussion amongst the full membership of all three boards at Town Hall. Unfortunately, I was under the weather and wasn't able to make it, but we were very well represented by the members of our Budget Subcommittee. Superintendent Girardi was there, Michelle Resendez was there, and also, what's that?
Jen.
Jen was there, I believe Bethelin was there. So, it's positive to have all the members of the three major committees in town sitting together in a room talking about town priorities and, more importantly, trying to develop a strategic vision of spending for the next three to five to seven years at a town level. So, that's very positive. We also have meetings on the books for November and December with the ultimate outcome hopefully being some sort of a working document that identifies priorities as a town and, more importantly, identifies some long-term spending and capital goals as a town. Mary, Mary was just informing me that this coming Thursday night at 7:00 PM at the library in the Roosevelt Room, the membership of the Budget Subcommittee, which is Mary and Mary, and also the two members from Board of Selectmen and the two members from the Finance Committee will be meeting again in small group to continue the discussions and put in some work. The meeting has been posted, like I said, 7:00 in the Roosevelt Room in the library. So, if you're interested in the nuances of budgeting and spending, I encourage you to come out and participate. Next item, I had the lovely opportunity last night to come here to Fowler and participate in my four-year, my fourth grade daughter's parent-teacher conferences. It's amazing to me that it's already parent-teacher conference season. It feels like the school year just began, but we're already approaching the end of October. The building looked great. It was nice to see so many parents involved. There were a lot of parents filtering in and out of classrooms, especially in the fourth-grade hallway, and it seemed like a really positive evening. And I also wanted to publicly thank the coaches and the players from the girls' varsity soccer team and the boys' varsity soccer team on two excellent soccer clinics that they helped for Maynard use soccer over the last couple of weeks. My son and my daughter both participated, and they absolutely have not stopped talking about it. It's a really great opportunity for our student athletes to connect with youth at Maynard. We had wonderful weather boat nights, and it was just absolutely fantastic. So, I wanted to publicly thank them for that as well. And I believe that comes to the end of my chairperson's report. So, Dr. Girardi, Superintendent's report.
So, since the last meeting, I attended the Tech and Learning Conference. Where I was very pleased to know how well Maynard is equipped as far as technology infrastructure and, but my concern was that the staffing to help us use that infrastructure was not equivalent to other districts that are as well, that have as much infrastructure as we do. So, you know, as we look at the budget, I think we have to look at that issue because we did, you know, Jennifer and the Technology Committee put together a five-year technology plan, a 10-year technology budget, three years ago, I think in 2015, and we have not been able to staff it. So, it's a concern when you have, you know, it's like having a great tool, but not everybody knows how to use it, and you don't have anybody to help teach people to use it.
More importantly, the town supported us with a lot of money-
Match of funds, yes.
-to support the infrastructure.
Right. But with that said, I learned some really great ideas as to how to improve the use for families, what kind of other programs they do in other, in other states as far as access and equity for all families. So, those are the sort of things that I bring back to me from a conference that hopefully we'll be able to implement, not just the piece that I'm concerned about, but there's other positive things that you learn. And so, that's really exciting that we're in a good position and we have the ability to provide technological access, much more so than other parts of our state and other states. So, you know, another thing I learned was that Western Massachusetts still has nine communities that don't even have broadband access. So, even though the school might have computers and broadband access, when the children go home, there's no way for the children or the families to access the Internet, which also makes it harder for parents to apply for jobs because now they can't go on online job boards. I mean, there is a definite stark difference of the haves and the have-nots, and we're fortunate by birthright to be in this wonderful region of the most best state in the nation and in the world. So, we're fortunate where we're at when you start to learn about other parts of the nation that are very similar to Western Mass, but even in Western, I was shocked when I thought out about Western Mass, right so close to us and yet they don't have broadband access. I mean, I don't know what I'd do without it. So, you learn a lot at these conferences. It makes you really appreciate what you have, but it also hopefully makes you more efficient in how you use it, and that's, that was really exciting. Also, on Monday, I was at Shaw's, and I saw this article on the importance of recess. So, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about that. It's a very good article. It's interesting, though, because some of the challenges that we talked about at the last couple of meetings, you know, the Department of Ed saying that recess doesn't count as time on learning, those are some of the challenges that we've had, but we're still going to work through it, and it's nice to see that there are other districts that are working on this issue, and they believe in it, too. Districts like Boston, districts like Medway, districts that are similar to our size, but also big cities. So, it is an important issue, and if anybody gets a chance to go online, it's a good article about the importance of recess. And those are the two major things I had for tonight.
Fantastic. Follow-up questions on anything, Dr. Girardi? Okay. Student representative report. Not seeing Sophia or Olivia tonight, unfortunately.
We can always come back to it.
Sounds good. Moving on, citizens comments.
Do you want me to get up there? You know I'm going to talk. Do I need to go up here?
No, and in reference to the fact that you are mobility hindered, right?
Okay, thank you.
And you're blessed with a great set of pipes.
So, I just wanted, on the wires, there's a lot of talk about the fact that we, that Veterans Day is the Friday, Veterans Day that she goes on Saturday, but the federal holiday is being celebrated on the Friday, and we have School Friday, and we don't have School Monday. I was here at the school committee meeting in the spring when that was discussed. I don't remember the detail around, I remember the teachers like voted on it, like, because they didn't want the four-day weekend, but there's just all this talk that, how come we have school on the Friday when that should be, apparently that's like when the national holiday is being recognized or observed?
I just remember some of the things we talked about. So, the schedule, which is fascinating, sort of, and crazy, is a collaboration between the administration and the teachers, and Meg probably knows a lot more about that than I do. But we, it's, we're a district that actually really lets the teachers be involved, and I remember asking the teachers that came that night-
Right, right. I remember that.
...of the whole fourth grade team and the whole fifth grade team. And so, when you look at November, you've got the day before Thanksgiving, which is a day. There's a special professional development day that we knew Jen was going to be requesting, and I don't know if we knew the day then, or we probably did, actually.
I think we did, because that's why they-
So, it was really a group effort. So, yeah, you're going to find other towns doing it differently. They probably don't have a professional development day, and they might have a half-day on Thanksgiving. So, I get it that people are confused.
So, is it, was the decision that the professional day needed to happen in November, and the question was posed to the teachers, when do you want that?
Not quite to that, I don't, I mean, Meg, you would probably hear it.
I don't think we were directly, it was sort of a general asking of-
It was like, here's November, it was more like, here's November.
Yeah.
So, there's a couple, there were a couple different pieces. We had put forward the calendar, rolling over the dates as we always do, and identified at that point the professional development day on the Monday. That was the decision that the teachers had weigh in because they felt like to put that professional development day in September or October would have been very problematic with the continuity of instruction at the beginning of the year. So, they felt like putting it in November was more appropriate. That was the calendar that was presented to the school committee. At the school committee, questions were asked about the sort of stat, chopped-up nature of November and what the regulations are around the holidays. As you may recall, many years ago, federal law changed to recognize Veterans Day on the day, not on, on a weekend. So, it's always recognized on the 11th. State law in Massachusetts indicates that if a holiday, a federal holiday is on a week, on a Saturday, it is recognized on the day. If it is on a Sunday, it is recognized on that Monday. So, I believe the school committee was going along with what Massachusetts, the laws in Massachusetts in terms of recommendations. So, that, that was the decision, and that was the conversation.
I know, too, I remember sharing, in my school, we always have Veterans Day, and we do a special Veterans Day assembly and invite veterans from the community to the school, which is a really great way of honoring the holiday. So, I just know personally, I thought, you know what, like, do it, do something here. Awesome, it's a holiday, but kids are in school, let's educate them about veterans. So, I remember, that was my opinion.
So, but it's because of that, because there's, there's all this talk, you know, people are saying, the federal holiday is the Friday, so it's, in Massachusetts, it is the day, it's the 11th.
I can go back and look at the, the specific language around the law, but it, it is, I believe the federal government, because I was forwarded a list of federal holidays, although I think it might have been from last year because the dates were wrong on it, or the days of the week were wrong on it, with that same question. My understanding is that the federal definition of Veterans Day is on the day, it's always on the 11th. In Massachusetts, the recognition of that day, if it falls on any day other than a Sunday, is on that day.
And the professional day was decided to be a Monday as opposed to the Friday for-
So, that was decided prior to knowing we would not have Veterans Day off, or we would have, we, we would have school on Veterans Day. So, the assumption of the teachers, the Professional Development Committee, when we met, was that there would be no school on that day because that was the draft calendar they were working off of. When the decision was made, I sort of asked the collectorate, do we want to go both here and at the Professional Development Council? Do we want to take another stab at this? Do we want to take another look? And they, they're, I don't want to say that the answer was no, it was sort of like, I think it's fine. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion around moving it to a different day.
I just, you might hear talk of this because people are on the wire.
What is, so in this, in the same way going forward, is it that people don't have childcare for Monday? Like, what's the, like, other than like the-
There are people who, families are military, that they're saying, why don't we have Friday off?
So, just playing it out, and I'm just being devil's advocate-
Yeah.
-because I think it's awesome. I don't even know if my kid will be in the Cub Scout parade, like, I don't know, I haven't even thought that through. So, tell me how Friday is better for them, because I'm only looking for like, well, this will come up again in a few years.
I think it's just people are like, we are the only people that have school that-
Oh, okay, so just say, normal summer.
And people who have, you know, milit-, I mean, like you said, Saturday is the holiday, but I think people are, you know, upset that it's not honoring our-
They were expecting Friday off.
They would expect a day off, it's a childcare issue, it's a, you know, you just might hear, might come to you guys, so, because some people are feeling pretty passionate about it, so.
Thank you.
Letting it out there.
I found this Massachusetts-
I have it, too, if you want.
In the event of a legal holiday falls on a Saturday, all offices under the jurisdiction of any Department of State Government shall be open to the public for business on the Friday immediately preceding any Saturday holiday. Should be okay. No, it says shall, and shall is illegal by the law, rather than should. Shall is stronger than should.
Shall is not to be.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number six, school improvement plans. And we're going low-tech.
We're going low-tech, I apologize. There are PowerPoint presentations in the back. So, there is this big thick PowerPoint presentation, which thankfully got printed out in its entirety, so now you can see it. And then also more detail in the update and summary of goals. So, we apologize about the low-tech nature of this, we're not sure what's happening with those connections. So, essentially, we'll just walk through this. This is our annual presentation of the district and school improvement plans. Part of the ed reform law is that the district shall engage in a district review process and identify improvement plans for any number of initiatives that we have. I have provided for you, once again, those of you who saw our presentation last year, may recall the strategic initiative, or excuse me, strategic mission, essentially, last two summers ago, myself and the principal's administrative team sat down to figure out, okay, if we do this, what will then happen so we could make sure that we are guiding our professional time, professional development time in a way that helps to meet some very specific goals. And so, this was a guiding statement that helped us to make sure that when we were organizing professional development activities, faculty meetings, that we were organizing around, around very specific initiatives and not doing what my former boss used to call popcorn PD, which is just random stuff that happens because someone thought it would be a good idea. The next page, you see the draft of our strategic initiative. I say our strategic plan, I say that only because we're constantly modifying and tweaking as, as we should to make sure that we are hitting the most important elements. You see there the BRICS, if you will, under inclusive practices and superior academic experience. Those are the four that we focused on last year. In speaking with the instructional leadership team, there was a significant amount of feeling that we really wanted to maintain focus on those four so that we could see some of the work through, and again, not jump to something else. So, the next section is the 16, 17 goal update. Last year, and we continued the trend this year, we have an academic goal and a social-emotional goal, and then school council goal. So, I'm going to ask the principals to speak to the updates related to, Donna, the science, scope and sequence development. Can you do it at the microphone, just because that's the only way it goes to the folks at home?
So, the science initiative has been a multi-year initiative, really focusing on the integration of science and nature, but also the, the adaptation of the nation, of the new next-generation science standards and kind of putting them together with what we're doing in our practices. So, we've been working with the Massachusetts Audubon Society to look at how do we use our natural environment, how do we incorporate that into what we're doing, and what does that look like in conjunction with the standards in terms of a year of instruction. So, that work was being done last year, a lot of work was being done on content as well as pedagogy, looking at inquiry-based learning. There were units developed, you know, it's, it's a multi-year project, there's still work to be done, but there's a lot of work that has happened, and the teachers worked through their professional development time that we had, the early release days with the Massachusetts Audubon Society, to kind of make a lot of progress in this area. They are continuing, and many teams are using that as team goals to continue to flush this out and to make a complete scope and sequence.
Thank you. And Principal Seiler will speak to the development of the writing rubrics that are currently ready for implementation.
Hello. We were really excited last year to begin the work of developing writing rubrics for a couple of reasons. One, because it was going to continue, it was going to align with the work that the high school folks were doing with writing. The other thing is, we know that it's a high-leverage initiative that is something that is tied that will raise all boats, and we expect that impact will be strong. And so, what we started was, with was to develop a writing rubric so that all students kind of know where the bar is, and then what we ended up with was three different writing rubrics, so it could be specific to the three genres of writing, which is informational, narrative, and persuasive. And we are looking forward to taking that out for, to start utilizing it.
Great, thank you. Principal Gariganis led the initiatives at the high school, as Principal Seiler mentioned, with writing as well, and so you can speak to that work.
Sure. At the high school, we had writing rubrics in place by department and subject, excuse me, as well as some school-wide rubrics. This year, we decided to revisit them and revise them to make sure they were really where we wanted them to be. And we also took a look at making sure that we were clear on what expectations were by grade level. So, for example, in the English department, to make sure there wasn't redundancy, to make sure that we had a sense of what a freshman should do, a sophomore should then add on to, et cetera. We began a process, and this is ongoing this year, for, to ensure inter-rater reliability. Our departments have met this year, they've looked at samples of student work, they've looked at the work against the rubrics that have been revised, and they're coming to consensus on how to score student work, and we're going to be continuing work on inter-rater reliability for our next two professional developments. Once we're satisfied that we have inter-rater reliability, we're going to begin analyzing student work that's graded on the rubrics to start to identify areas of strength and weakness. We intend to do that through December and January, and we hope to have that fully out there by January. By the end of this year, the departments will go on to develop interventions based on weaknesses that we identify, and we want to then have those interventions in place for the 2018, 19 school year so that we're looking at a process of continuous professional development leading to interventions for students to help raise writing scores. So, that's what we're up to.
Thank you. So, the next slide that you will have focuses on last year's social-emotional goals. Last year at Green Meadow, Principal Dankner led with her Guidance Department and Adjustment Counselor Department identification of common expectations and common vocabulary.
So, as a school, we really focus on using the responsive classroom as a way of kind of guiding our process throughout the school. We also have our core values of we are kind, we are safe, we are learners. But just to kind of grow that a little bit, we focus on giving students the vocabulary they need and the understanding to articulate their thoughts and feelings. So, through our counselors started to introduce the zones of regulation, which are the green, yellow, red zones, so students can identify, how am I feeling? And I'm in the red zone, I'm in the green zone, how do I move from zone to zone? And just to be aware of that self-awareness of how I'm feeling, we did that through grade level meetings, we did that through conversations within the classroom, and just continuing to use that vocabulary. That is an ongoing process of helping children understand how they're feeling, understand how they're responding, and finding different ways to express their thoughts and feelings, and finding different ways to solve problems.
At Fowler, you may recall, we talked a significant amount about growth mindset, and the team worked very hard around instruction and development of a survey.
Yes, to continue the work and be able to measure the impact that our work had with growth mindset, Student Services Department worked very hard at creating, I would say it's a survey, but it's also a rubric, and it basically created shades of gray for students to understand a little bit more about flexible thinking, and to unpack the belief systems that they have, and before they cement them in, to be able to kind of pull at it and, consider a different way of thinking. So, we send a lot of messages around the power of perseverance, grit, you're not born smart, you get smart, and mistakes are part of learning. So, as we continue that, we figured we would start inside and get inside their heads, and then we will use that this year as we start to also develop social-emotional learning with externalizing strategies to be successful with others. So, we're excited.
And at the high school, I've mentioned this initiative multiple times, incredibly proud of our teachers and our high school staff around growth mindset and the advisory model change. This is something that was led by teachers, was directed by teachers because they saw a need for it, and you can see in the PowerPoint slide some specific data related to that. So, Principal Gariganis will talk through, talk through some of that.
Yeah, a couple of initiatives that we've taken on. First, I'll talk about the advisory model and then some work we're going to be doing as a staff later this year. Folks may have heard this before, but the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASC, in their report in 2012 indicated that all schools should have the opportunity for students to be in an advisory model where they can connect with additional adults and peers in the building to build relationships, to help them when things aren't going so well, and just to broaden their network. The first year, we put the advisory model in place. We always did it on an early release day, we always did it last period, and the curriculum was put together by the teachers and really focused in an academic way on social skills and social growth. And the students hated it, and they voted with their feet, literally. What was supposed to be a community-building activity became students attempting to cut class and leave the building, and so now we had a discipline problem instead of a community-building issue. So, we thought it might be good to learn from that. So, the next year, structurally, we began doing advisory periods in the middle of the day so we could block all the doors, and students still had to, other classes to go to that day so they wouldn't take off. But we really didn't change the curriculum because we thought, this is important stuff, you really, you really need to know this stuff. And we surveyed the students at the end of the year, and the survey results were just really, Jean LaBelle, who worked on it, said she was almost in tears reading the data because the, the results were so negative. So, third time, we knew we had the right timeframe now, like where, so we had it correctly placed in the day, and we went to an interest-based advisory model where teachers would lead groups of similar interests where the teachers themselves were also interested in the topic. And anecdotally, that went really well. The teachers reported that it was just a whole different experience, students were enjoying it, students were anecdotally stating that they enjoyed it. But what we realized we hadn't done is we hadn't captured that in any systematic way. So, as we've done this, we now have students select different advisory groups three times a year, and we've started collecting data from the students each time. And the next several slides show you the results of that survey data, and what we had been hearing anecdotally, it's always pleasing when it's actually borne out by the data you see. So, the first thing you'll see is just some of the groups that students selected, but then you'll see how they described their experience from, I did not enjoy it, for example, to it was one of the best experiences in MHS. You can see the data clustering in a way that Jean LaBelle was no longer crying, I think she was actually kind of giddy. And you'll then see that what we had hoped had happened in subsequent slides, that students were interacting with faculty members they hadn't before, they were enjoying those interactions, they were interacting with peers they hadn't interacted with before, they were enjoying those interactions, they could identify skills that they really felt they were getting out of the advisory model. So, now what we thought was working, anecdotally, we feel is working based on the survey data, and we're obviously going to be continuing with this. An additional training that we're going to be doing is, we've been looking at, as a faculty, at Ross Green's work, Lost at School, and we were, we had two major professional development strands we wanted to develop this year. There was the writing strand that I described earlier, but there's also this strand, and we debated, should we alternate our professional development, first one, then the other, then back to writing, then back? And we made the decision that that would actually not be as effective as concentrating on one and then concentrating on the other. So, in the first half of the year, we've been concentrating on the writing improvement goal, and in the second half of the year, starting in February, we're going to be concentrating on the second goal. So, this is what we're doing in these regards at the high school. Thank you.
So, the last piece of the update are the school council goals. All of these are things that are works in progress, the alignment of math, instructional practices, and common assessments. Donna, do you want to speak to that one?
So, this school council goal was incredibly supported by our math coach, who truly wanted us to be focusing on math and the role it plays within the classroom setting. So, together with the grade-level teams, she would meet with the grade-level teams, work with teams on aligning the practices, aligning everything, using our Go Math as our basis, bringing in additional assessments such as Symphony Math in order for us to guide and to determine how our students are progressing along this path, using the Go Math lessons- to determine how our students are progressing along this path, using the Go Math lessons that are within the system, to be able to help children grow in their understanding of math more, as well as their ability to compute. So together, we've been working on that, coming up with those common assessments, looking at the assessments and analyzing data. And that will be continuing and focusing on instructional practices.
Thank you. Principal Seiler led the Family and Community Resource Guide Development with her school council.
Yes. The school council thought it would be important for us to come up with a comprehensive resource that we could share with the community of Fowler families so that they could know two things. One, how they can get involved. And the second part was, all of the community partnerships we have. So as simple as it sounds, it's taken a lot of work and details putting it together. But we're excited because we're putting the finishing touches on it and looking forward to sharing that with you soon.
And this is something we've talked about before. Principal Kary Janis led and participated in discussions around scheduling updates. We've talked about the need for scheduling revisions at the high school. And Principal Kary Janis, if you want to share some of the conclusions that the group reached around those discussions.
The high school school council actually is made up of five parents, five faculty members, and five students, as well as two community members and myself. So it's a, it's a large group. And I think it really captures the just different constituencies at the high school. Discussions around scheduling, there are a couple of things that have been discussed. One thing, which is scheduling related, is should we move to a later start time? And so there's been some discussion about that. There's also been discussion about number of periods per day, block scheduling versus our current scheduling system. There's significant pushback against block scheduling, I have to say, by the, by the school council. Although I'm not sure that there's been enough information shared about the different types of block scheduling that actually exist. I think people have a certain model in mind and don't realize that that's the only model. So that's something we're going to need to continue to work on. Something that's come up in the scheduling discussions is also, I have to say, something that's been a concern for a couple of years. We actually had a school council meeting this afternoon, and it's with the newly elected members. Many are carryovers because we do two-year terms, but it includes newly seated members. And the concerns were similar to what they have been in the past. Particularly at our junior and senior level, the number of electives we offer compared to what we've offered in the past has been reduced over the last few years due to some budgetary and scheduling constraints. And the group is identifying the need to bring back electives. And the electives they would like to see brought back have a particular focus on computer science. We would like to have a computer science continuum, something, you know, to put it in a rudimentary way, like in a beginner, intermediate, and advanced model, where the advanced group would probably be ready to tackle the AP exam. So that's one area that the school council's identified as an elective that, electives that aren't currently offered. They also would like to see finance courses brought in and economics brought into the high school curriculum. But of course, all of these require the FTEs to do that. And a final strand that they've been interested in is that in any particular academic area, that a student be able to continue through to the highest level course that's normally offered at the high school level. So that if a student begins in Spanish, they can realistically know that there'll be a Spanish V or AP Spanish class at the end, even if those class sizes are relatively small. So that obviously involves FTEs as well. So this is, these are areas of concern that our school council have focused on in the last couple of years. And it was interesting, we, we actually did a brainstorming session at our school council meeting today. So this hadn't been discussed in advance. And little breakout groups of about four people, we had groups form. And the elective issue and the bringing back of electives was actually in each group without any priming. So the students recognize it, the parents recognize it, and the faculty recognize it. So those are the school council priorities.
Can I just ask a quick question? With your three FTE estimate, that doesn't even touch the language, getting the languages up to the fives?
They're close right now. So these are frequently fractional. Right now, we have a point eight foreign language teacher. It would involve moving that person up to a one point oh. In our EL section right now, this is an elective related, but currently we have a point six. But our EL numbers spiked this year, 10 days before school started. Our numbers almost doubled from 12 to 21. We had late registrations. So that would be like a point four. But so when you take these fractional pieces together, along with what would be needed for computer science, it comes up to about three point oh.
And EL is English Language Learners.
English, English, yeah. It's now, it's now called English Learners.
Chuck, I thought that Rita Murphy was doing the computer science now.
Pardon?
I thought Rita Murphy.
She, we're offering a single course in computer science, which would be the equivalent of an introductory course. If you wanted to then add on a, an intermediate and an advanced to get up to that AP level, you know, there's like another point four FTEs there. We have, we've lost a, we've lost FTEs in the history department over the years. So we lost history electives. We'd like to bring those back. That's where economics had been nested in the past, for example. So again, it's, it's, it's not one of these and one of these and one of these. It's like bits here and there, plus maybe one, you know, a person here, kind of thing.
And I would just add that, you know, we've had computer science at the middle school, which is why we implemented it. We started it this year, but really, next year is when you're going to start seeing kids who are going to be requesting computer science. So it really is imperative.
Mark, does computer science include programming? Like if people want, you know, because you hear so much about programming. Is that all encompassed or am I, are those separate disciplines?
Well, there's two, right now, the, if you want to talk AP, which is sort of the standard, they have two tracks right now in their AP classes. One is more program focused and one is more application developed for the Android, iOS phone platform, web-based type applications. So those are the two areas.
Chuck, how does the, how does it work as far as the students figuring out their schedules? Is it, when is it done? So that maybe you could, could we kind of?
It's like budget season. No.
I'm a fast learner.
No.
I'm a fast learner.
What'll, what'll?
Literally is like budget season.
I know, it's a case.
Well, what'll happen in January, students will make course requests. And then based on course requests, we begin to get a picture of what classes will fill. And we start constructing the schedule from there. We get into dicey areas. If a number of students are recommended for honors as opposed to college placement, then you get into debates about should we offer two sections of this or one? Because how, you know, what kinds of numbers do you want in different types of classes? As the student population's grown at the high school, that's become more challenging because we're starting to see some really large class sizes and, just because of how number breaks are occurring. And also, we then get into the dilemma of, well, six students want AP Calculus. Should we offer a class with only six? This is a number I'm just making up right now. It's actually a much larger number this year in AP Calculus. But then you get into the debate of, should a quality high school that's competing with other communities offer an AP class even if enrollment is six or not? So those are the sorts of things that we have to wrestle with. After, after the requests are made and that initial pass is done, I should just let you know that the guidance counselors then review all the student selections to make sure they're appropriate. They meet with students individually. And from there, the schedules are constructed. What's made it challenging the last few years is it's been up in the air as to exact staffing levels. So it's sort of like, it's a very big interlocking puzzle. And even not knowing a little bit on, in terms of staffing, has big impacts on holding scheduling up. Because are we offering this class or aren't, aren't we offering this class? If we are, there's certain solutions. If we aren't, those students need to be redistributed to other classes. And then you have to look at the numbers all over again. So it, it's very challenging.
I am glad that you do start it in January, though. You don't wait until you find out what the, I mean, it's like you've got a plan and then we need to fight for it, basically. Fight for the budget. So.
Absolutely.
The other piece is the virtual high school. How is that, is that filling in some of the electives or not so much?
A little bit.
I mean, you can take calc, I don't think you can take calculus.
Permission to speak freely?
I'm not bright enough to do that. I need handle.
I'll take Chuck off the hot seat for this one because I think this is, there's a couple different pieces of this. Virtual high school fills in some electives. The challenge with online courses, and this is probably what Principal Kary Janis has experienced with students, is that it's a very different learning structure than what they're used to. And so I think universally, not just in Maynard, but in just about every district that has pockets of online learning, not as a part of their culture, they're kind of universally hated by the students. I don't know if that's too strong of a, of a statement.
Close.
Yeah. So they, they take them in pockets where they can. A few students who want to take some unique courses and find them and find success there. We do, we have had a bit more success with our hybrid model that we're running with LaSalle, the dual enrollment model that we're running with LaSalle, where there's some face-to-face and some online courses. Dr. Girardi and I have talked significantly about how we can increase the rate at which our students are taking and are successfully completing online courses, not just as a staffing piece or an elective piece, which is certainly helpful, but more as a skill development for our students who will have to take these courses in college. So we are working on that. And we have very passionate discussions about how to make sure that students are successful within that model. But I think the reputation of the VHS courses, just again, not due to the nature of the instructor or the nature of the program, just due to the fact that it's so different from what they're used to. It sort of is a, is a non-starter for a lot of folks.
If I could add on, at a school council meeting, in our first meeting in September, the student members actually had a very interesting insight. I thought, I thought this was extremely worthwhile. The discussion, the topic of VHS came up, and the students were saying that they really, generally didn't favor the course. But what was interesting was, it wasn't that they were saying, let's not do it because it's new. They actually had an alternative idea. Several of our staff members now are extensively using Google Classroom. And, and they're doing things that mimic Blackboard that you would see in college. And what the students suggested was that we actually invest in training so that all teachers are using Google Classroom and setting up a Blackboard-like environment so that the high school classes would actually simulate college classes. So that the training they'd be receiving as students would prepare them for college within the high school environment. And I kind of said, that's not a bad idea. So this might, this, what this might be something we're really looking at very seriously next year, is that training component to get the high school classrooms to have a very college-like feel in terms of structure.
That's great. Chuck, I wanted to share one thing, this is about the schedule. And I don't pretend to know nearly, really very much at all about the high school schedule. But when you were saying that people are opposed to blocks, I was, I was thinking about our own school transitioned probably about five years ago now to blocks. And I was on the scheduling committee when we were trying to decide what to do. And it was, people were so opposed to it. But when you ask staff now universally, people just say, we can't even believe we never had this before.
We had it.
And what we found in our research was just that they say, particularly for older kids, that the transition time at the beginning and the end of class, like when you arrive to a class, it takes about 10 minutes for the brain to show up, like to just forget where it was and to arrive. And so with the shorter classes, so much time is lost because you're still just getting there. So I, I don't know. I just would like, keep, keep talking about it. I'm glad you guys are talking about it.
And we did have.
I've actually taught within a block schedule and I personally had great success.
I think we had it about 10 years ago, I think. But we only gave it like a couple of years and it just, I don't.
I believe you also had a four by four, which is a tough schedule.
It was a four by four.
Yeah, that's what I mean by there's different types of block scheduling. So I think there are some teachers who have been there long enough that they remember the previous experiment with the four by four. And they think, that's it? That's the only model there is? You know, please don't bring that back. But there are many other models.
We actually stayed because, because there were reasons for maintaining some shorter classes, too. So Mondays, we have all eight of our classes in 45-minute blocks. But then the rest of the week, it goes like Tuesday, Thursday for four and four, and Wednesday, Friday. And they're your, you know, if it's year-long classes.
That's a much better model. Yeah.
I didn't come to go to school around here. I went to school in New Jersey at a private school. We had block scheduling. And that was my only option, so it's the only thing I'm used to. It was, I've noticed, we were one of the only schools in the area. I went to a state school, and the options were only longer classes. I was one of the only freshmen that was prepared for a two to three hour class compared to people who were used to a 45-minute class. It gave me a huge advantage in college. And in high school, it was, it was great. Our teachers were able to do like experiments because it wasn't like a 30-minute class. We were able to do like more breakout sessions. And I don't know how your schedules would work, but we had like a flex for our lunch. It was like 50 minutes. And we, the first part, we ate like lunch. The second part, we met with our like clubs and everything. And we didn't have to do that before or after school. We did it during flex. And it was, it was basically the best experience of my life, like for schedule-wise, better than college, better, you know, it was just great. And then my, one of my cousins just switched to my high school after going to a regular schedule. And I called her and I asked her, what's your favorite part? And she said, it's the block scheduling.
Interesting.
So, you know, consider it again, because I think that there's tons of advantages.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
And, and again, I have taught within a block schedule and, and found it to be my preferred instructional time.
So when will you make that decision as to? No pressure.
Not, not tonight.
So this is something that we've been working on for three years. I think when I first got here was when we began the conversations. Generally speaking, unless you can make the scheduling recommendation change in December, January, February, you don't want to put it in because you need time for the staff to get the professional development and training. So, you know, and Chuck is getting the council together, you know, and is having the conversations. And as he mentioned, there's a variety of other scheduling questions around start times and things of that nature. So I, I would guess to have a really thoughtful discussion, we're really looking at another year out. But if we can do it faster, we'll do it faster.
That's okay.
Rather do it well.
Yeah.
I think we made Chuck stand.
I know. So I've got a couple of general questions, if I could, and then more for you, Jen, I think. The, so the writing rubrics, this is near and dear to my heart. And I'm thrilled that we're bringing it back. I guess my question is, how is it different from, last time I was in school committee, and we spent so much time to get it integrated into the system, and then it seems to have gone away? So I guess, is it, is it a similar type of rubric that we recreated? And how are we going to make sure that it's instituted this time?
Um, the rubrics at the high school, you heard Principal Karen Janis mention, those were not recreated. They were simply recalibrated. They were the ones that were created the last time. They were recalibrated. And then the significant work this year, which is more so than just, do we have a writing rubric and are we using it? Are we seeing the same things in the writing as we're evaluating it? So that's the work that his staff is doing right now, is, is having students do writing and then coming together collaboratively as disciplinary teams to score that writing and say, okay, is a four a four? Is this good? Is this a good thesis statement? Does this provide good evidence? You know, so that they're consistent in their expectations of students. I think, you know, Dr. Girardi is going to be talking about the MCAS and some of the, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure some of you have read the news articles about the raising of the bar of this particular test. I don't know what happened in the last transition and why, you know, sort of it fell away. But certainly what we're seeing with the MCAS over the last five years is really an expectation that this is the kind of work that we're not just doing in English classes, but we're doing across the board. So I think the expectation is there. I also know that the high school staff and the Fowler staff is very hungry for this type of professional development and structure, to really focus on teaching and learning, to focus on skills. So I'm very hopeful that the structure will maintain.
I was thrilled to hear that actually it's going from Fowler up to. I was thrilled to hear that actually it's going from Fowler up to the high school. They're talking the same language because I'm, if anything, I've heard that there's a little weakness in the middle school that then needs to be caught up at the high school. So I'm thrilled that the two of you guys are working together. So-
And with that, I can, oh, more questions, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah. Just a couple more, sorry. So as far as the social-emotional learning, it seems like all three schools have sort of like a different program. And I guess it seems to me that it would make sense to have everybody speak the same language from, and maybe that is what's going on, but the basics that are happening at Green Meadow, it seems like Fowler's doing something different and the high school's doing something different.
So those were our updates of last year's goals of where we are. The next set of the presentation is really focusing on our goals for this year and we will see more alignment with our structures in that piece. And to that point, I can focus on this year's goals related to academics and Sharon can come up and talk, I'm sorry, Donna can come up with her new role as curriculum, principal of curriculum instruction and assessment, and really talk to the work that's going on at Fowler. Before you do that, you do see the district academic goals. And this is a little bit different from what we did last year. Last year, we simply focused on the school-based goals. This year, we really wanted to make sure as a district-level office, Ms. Gahan, myself, Dr. Girardi, were doing work around the same sort of themes that would support the work that was being done at the building levels as well. And so you see here, our goal of common assessments showing an increase in students meeting expectations and critical thinking, collaborative problem-solving and leadership by the June of 2019. And I'm very excited about that goal because I think it's something that is important. It focuses on the big picture and you'll see how it connects, connects down through. You can come back up now. I'm ready for you. So Principal Carrie Janus has already spoken to the high school and the work that they're doing at Fowler. Again, they will be working on the three different pieces and Donna has worked extensively with the literacy coach here at Fowler to really create an innovative program to really use the zone time effectively to help work on this writing. So if you want to speak to some of those structures.
So being new to Fowler, I was learning about those writing, the writing rubrics. And I have to say, I've been very impressed by the work that was done and the thoughtfulness that went into the, to the writing rubrics. You know, writing is not just about responding to something, it's also about conveying your message. So how do we convey our messages with clarity? And that's a life skill that our students need to have. So working with the literacy coach and Meg Sullivan, who both have been really instrumental in this whole process, we have thought about how do we teach our students to be able to write a response to anything in any content area effectively, well-written, well-thought-out, really conveying their message. So we've decided to use the zone time in order to be able to convey that. The zone time is a time when, throughout the school, we are all working on the same focus, the writing and the writing rubrics. So we're looking at, so we began this with just kind of helping our students learn to write with a flow. We began that with a common literacy theme, reading a book that everybody was listening to and hearing about and responding to and giving thoughtful answers to really complex kinds of questions. Once we are finished that, the teacher teams through our professional development are working on what kind of activators would we like to share with our students in all the varied content areas to enable them to be able to write responses? And then what are the teaching points from our writing rubrics that help them develop those skills? So not only do we want them to be able to get their ideas down, but how do we make sure that those writing responses are thoughtful, are thorough, are well-written, well-structured, use extensive vocabulary? How do we make sure that that happens? And that happens by having not only the writing prompts, but also having the instruction that goes along with that. So as teacher teams, we thought, well, they work together to find at each grade level, what do we do in terms of a math response? How do we write a response in mathematics? What do we, how do we respond to a picture of something we've seen? How do we give an opinion? How do we use our writing rubrics to be able to help with those thoughtful teaching points? And then, once we've done, we're done with that, how do we look at these, this writing that the students have done and glean from it, what are our students' strengths and what are their areas and needs of focus? And so the part of that is then working with the staff and the professional development on evaluating student work through our writing rubrics and at the same time vetting our writing rubrics. Are they really getting to the crux of what we want them to get at? Are we really thinking about all of the different content areas? Are we thinking about how writing looks when we're writing something persuasive, when we're writing a narrative, or we're writing something informational? So that our students become really solid, very, very capable and competent writers. So that's the work that's going on. There was one, so they've done the work on the literacy part so far. Then along with the grade-level teams, they worked during the first early release day to create, what do our zone lessons look like per grade level? From now on, from now, as we go forward, we will work on evaluating student work. We will work on continuing the process and refining what we're doing.
And to follow that up with Green Meadow's academic goals, because Green Meadow, as fourth and fifth grade is as well, is all-encompassing, we have a math goal and a literacy goal. And what you're going to notice, and Donna can speak very briefly to some of these pieces, is that really we're focusing on looking at student work, figuring out who's got it, who doesn't, and what do we do about both of those situations.
So at Green Meadow, the real focus is on the foundational skills. So the math coach has identified that really what we need to focus on is using our common assessments to make certain that our students have that mathematical thinking and using those foundational numeracy skills. So she's working with the grade-level teams for that consistency of instruction, consistency of assessments, and truly working on, how do we make sure that our students have this information? What materials do we use? What lessons do we do? How do we intervene when we need to intervene? And how do we extend when students are ready for extension? And those are the pieces that she's working on with, with the grade-level teams, and that's what you'll be seeing within the classrooms. In terms of the literacy, it's again the foundation. As we go forward, are our students capable and competent readers? Do they understand what they're reading? Can they look at a word that they're unfamiliar with and determine what that is? And can they glean the meaning from the context? So using and really taking and giving students the variety of strategies they need to be effective readers, can they, we're giving them word study, using that word study to help them decode words and also to encode, to write words and to write them correctly. Can they use, find the information in text, but also can they take that information and put it together to make conclusions and to respond to answer, to questions that are not just questions from what's exactly in the text, but what do you think about the text and how, what do you think the motivation of the character is? And what do you think, how can you infer from the text? So really getting that foundational skill so that they, as they move forward into Fowler, they have that basis from which to grow and for which to learn.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on the academic goals for this year?
So how do the paraprofessionals play into this? As far as, I know there's been, there's a lot of professional development in that with the staff and that. What are we doing to help the paraprofessionals with their piece of this?
So there's a couple of different pieces. The paraprofessionals are not with us for every release day. And what I've done is worked closely with Ms. Gahan to, she identified a online program with various learning modules related from social-emotional to specific learning disabilities and also to some academic content so that we can really target differentiated professional development for those paraprofessionals. We are also having them come in and will have them come in at some point with the teacher teams. Carol and I worked on this initiative together when we were in Uxbridge. And what we found was that if we bring the paraprofessionals into the conversations with the teacher teams too early, neither group is sort of sure why they're there and they become really not purposeful conversations. Once we have sort of a structure and a process in place, we then brought the paraprofessionals into that conversation. And both the paraprofessionals and the teachers said it was the best conversation they had ever had because it was really combining all aspects of what was on in a classroom. So they will be involved in those conversations when that time is right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on the assignment?
So on Fowler?
Yeah.
It says you're going to, so the goal by June 2019, is this too early in your presentation?
You can ask whatever.
Fowler School students will demonstrate an increase in writing proficiency as evidenced by school-wide writing rubrics. Is that the evidence or is that the, how we hope it gets better? Like I would think the evidence would be similar to the sentence in the high school where it says, as demonstrated by common assessments. I'm not trying to nitpick, I just want, this is outside my realm.
So the writing, yeah, the writing, where it says writing rubrics and common assessments, those are really meaning the same thing. Rubric is the common assessment. Yep. Great. So we'll move on to the social-emotional. Mary, this gets to your question about sort of how are we aligning our work. And so what you'll see here is that we have a district goal, which is to improve positive culture and climate, which is something that we've talked significantly about at this table. And then the school goals are all of the same, where we want to be able to have students demonstrating use of specific social-emotional strategies when encountering difficult situations. We had significant conversation over the summer at our leadership team meetings about, should we do something different for the different schools, about the goals, given the different age levels of the students and where they are. And really what we came to is that this is what we're asking, what we want all our students to be able to do at any level that they're at. Of course, what it looks like at a second-grade level versus a 10th-grade level is going to be very different, but this is our goal. I'm going to skip through the district social-emotional learning benchmark goals. You can see that, that is the survey data that folks have been asking for and that we feel is very important for us to get on perceptions and so on, and additional staff training. And really focus on two pieces. So for the high school, you heard Principal Carrie Janus talking about the advisory model and how it will be updated with some of the collaborative and proactive solutions work so that they can embed through those activity-based advisories, some specific lessons around social-emotional learning. Very excited, we're very excited that at two schools, Fowler and Green Meadow, and I will have Principal Shea and Principal Saylor come on, come on up to talk to their PBIS initiatives that are happening within their schools. This is something that we had mentioned over the summer. We have the teams that are formed. They've had their first trainings and they're very excited about what's happening.
So you want me to talk about the social-emotional learning, just to make, just to be clear? Is it PBIS? Okay. Because I do, we started an advisory group this year and that's where the whole school stops.
I missed that. Yes.
Okay, just, that's why I want to make sure. Do you want me to talk about that?
I missed that one. Yep.
That's all right. So it's part of social-emotional learning and where, what we decided was really important for, and this was, you know, staff had given feedback to, it's important for us to stop for 30 minutes a week, get into small groups with staff and students and talk about matters that are important to kids. And in an environment where they know that adults care about them. So that was something that we started. A team of teachers worked over the summer to create curriculum. And there were, for year one, it's around core values, mindset, and conflict resolution, mindfulness, topics that we believe will give kids strategies and develop strategies so they can handle internal reactions and responses and improve peer relations. So one little funny story about advisory. So I chose to be, I wanted to be involved and I have seven eighth-grade kids. So the day they were going to be announced, I thought they all just went, oh my God, I got the principal. And this is the worst thing ever. So they came reluctantly to the first advisory and I said, sorry, you drew the short straw, but I'm really happy to have you. Let's see how this goes. So we've probably had four or five right now. And the, this past Wednesday, when the kids left, they, one kid was like, can we have advisory every day? And I went, no. Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. Get to class. So it wasn't really about me, but what I think what happened and what happened with this group is, it does matter to sit and talk about issues that matter to them and to try to touch the chord that can, that everybody in the room can relate to. And so it, for some reason, sitting there with the principal, it's the adult with the small group of kids talking about important matters. But so far, I've enjoyed it for sure.
Sharon, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is it the same group of eight kids every week or do you mix them up?
For 40 weeks.
Forty weeks for the same group. And they were just arbitrarily just chosen?
A little bit of randomness with a little bit of strategic feng shui-ing of things.
Yeah, it wasn't like all the best, all the best friends got to be together or anything like that.
Yeah, no, it's good. They kind of, they all looking at each other and someone like, wait, we're not in the same clique. I'm like, welcome. We're going to love each other. So it's good. And then just to talk about PBIS, it's, we're in the process, both schools are working together in the process to develop teams. And we have our teams developed and we're in the year-one planning and that involves timelines and specific work. And PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And what's great about it is it's an approach that you can customize for your school. So we're Fowlerizing that concept for us. We're in the early stages and, but we're looking forward to it. And this will be an important part, I think, to supporting the work we're doing. So do you want to-
Just add on to it. So we had the opportunity to send a core group two days already, which I had an opportunity to go, it was principals, a couple of teachers, parent representatives, specialists, our counselors. And it was just, it was a nice chance to get some training on it. And the goal will be, the first year to really look at data collection and deciding where our areas of need are. So kind of strategically planning on what we want to target. And then in later years, it'll be really fine-tuning the skills that we're going to be teaching for each of those areas. But I don't know, it was a lot of positive enthusiasm. And it's nice that both schools are sending a team. And in our building, we have a guidance counselor and a adjustment counselor. And the guidance counselor is in both buildings and they're going to be our coaches. So that's, to have that nice continuum that you were talking about.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Nice to finally meet you, by the way.
Yes.
I'm the only one that doesn't have a kid in elementary school. So I was like, I've got to meet her.
Thank you. And then the other goal that we have also at Green Meadow is to draft a social-emotional learning outline. And what that's looking like, our guidance staff, what they did is they sent out a survey already to teachers to find out what kind of trainings have they had, you know, responsive classroom, open circle, mindfulness, social thinking. So kind of finding out what do we already know? And then what they'll be doing is creating a trajectory of lessons to go in and teach. And the guidance counselor who's in both buildings will be at Green Meadow going into the classroom. And the topics will be similar to what you're talking about in advisory. There'll be things like conflict resolution, friendship skills, self-regulation, zones of regulation. So it'll be nice because it'll be that language starting young and working up. So.
Great. Thank you.
If you could come do zones of regulation during budget season.
Oh, my gosh, that's such a good idea.
We could all use that.
That's such a good idea.
You can look up the old videos.
On that note, so one of the questions we often get asked, specifically when we're saying that PBIS is going to be at Fowler and Green Meadow, is why not the high school? And there's a couple of reasons for that. One of them was simply initiative fatigue and making sure that we can focus on a couple of things and do them really well. Another one is that PBIS is often known as the you-get-stickers-for-doing-the-right-thing initiative. So as high school teachers, we often don't like giving out stickers for doing what we think people should be doing anyway, which is the fault of ours. We need to recognize and, and award the behaviors we're expecting. However, it tends to have a more negative bent. And it also hasn't been implemented in many high schools across the country. The research on high school PBIS is, is coming out. There is much more evidence-based practices around PBIS and the trainers that we have with the Yukon School of Education are doing that research and are guiding that. So we'll be at the forefront of those pieces. That doesn't mean that nothing is happening at the high school. However, we do have folks, as Principal Carrie Janus mentioned, who are focusing on collaborative and proactive solutions. If you recall, last year, we had talked about, Carol and I had talked about that initiative where kids will do well if they can. And if they're not doing well, it means they're lacking skills. So Chuck is working with his student support team to use some of those practices with some kids who get referred to that student support team. Additionally, I know that Kevin Caruso, the assistant principal, has been exploring restorative justice practices and using some of that work with his students as well. And so there will be work that's being done there. It's just going to be done in sort of a different way so that we can make sure that we're doing it really super well pre-K to eight and then it'll filter up through to the high school. And we're very excited about the work that we're doing. I was fortunate enough to be able to go to the second day, I went to the coach training and then also to the second day of the team training. And their eyes were really wide because it's, it's six days of training. If you look at the slide shows, it's about 57 slides a minute. So it's very fast and it's very comprehensive, giving you an overview of what it's going to be. But to both teams' credit, they saw, okay, I get this. I see it. It can work. This is what we need. And they were willing to sort of sit with that discomfort and trust the process. And I give the coaches and the teams all the credit in the world for doing that because it would have been very easy to say, yep, nope, too much, we're walking away. And I also thank the entire Green Meadow and Fowler community and the high school community. We are pulling 10 teachers essentially, teachers and paraprofessionals from these two buildings on the same days when we go to these trainings. I don't know if you know anything about our sub-coverage situations and the challenges we have identifying.
We were seeing emails about who was trying to cover who and it was-
Yeah. So I, the patience and the willingness of the entire community to really step up to the plate and support their teams to go to these trainings is hugely appreciated. So we're very excited about that piece of it. Any questions on the social-emotional?
I think you, you said that we were going to be getting periodic updates, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Like maybe in January or then in May or something like that?
So the way the trainings work is they had, they just had their first one, they'll go back in January and then they go back in June. Quite likely what we'll do is update you at the end after those pieces, so.
Thank you.
And then the next piece is sort of more my component of what are the next steps. So as we discussed last year, the school improvement plans really focus on what's happening with the teachers and teams in the classroom. This, that is not the only thing that is happening with teachers and teams in the classroom, we, even though we're focused on writing, we're still teaching math and science and social emotional learning and all those other pieces, but as a district level, we're not just focused on those components either, we wanna look at what's coming next. And so what you see here are the initiatives of academic pathways, communication and career pathways that are the focus of our task force groups. There are two groups that are already functioning, the Global Competency Task Force Group has already made two draft recommendations to the school committee last year for a K to six FLESS program of world...
Can you explain that?
World language through the elective, so essentially it would be a world language class in the elective rotation, K to six, and they recommended Spanish for that. And then seven through 12 world languages where the recommendation was that starting in seventh grade, students would be able to choose between French or Spanish, they would stay with that course in eighth grade, and then they could switch or add in the ninth grade for that world language piece. The last, there are two remaining recommendations that this group needs to make. One is on the six through eight immersion programming, and I have put in there the dates and times of the meetings and when we expect to have that recommendation for you all. There's also a teacher task force that is happening at the same time for that. And then, starting in January, we wanna start talking about the global competency pathway and making sure that we have that articulated, because that's something that we have a lot of students doing, going to Spain, going to Guatemala, and we wanna make sure that we have something that allows them to be recognized for that work. The second task force that's already in existence is the WAVM pathway.
Before, sorry, before we get there, that six to eight immersion, what are we talking about? Are we talking about the Spanish going up to the eighth grade?
Yes. Yep.
Really?
So that, that's the conversation and the question as to what should that look like?
So it's not set in stone yet, it's been, it's been discussed and worked on, there's ideas that are being worked through right now as to how to implement an adequate amount of Spanish immersion instruction depending on how that works.
And these meetings are open to the public?
They're open to the public, the, there is a teacher meeting that I would ask not be open to the public because I want to respect my staff and do that, but then the sick, the afternoon meetings from six to seven o'clock, I guess those are evening meetings, we have a group of, I think last year is about 12 women, which was lovely, both immersion and non-immersion parents represented, they had incredibly thoughtful conversations, really respecting the different perspectives of each group, and so we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago, that just really sort of restarted our work, and so we'll be, we'll be meeting all of the Thursdays in November except for Thanksgiving so that we can have that recommendation to you for December 14th.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sorry, those are open meetings?
Yep.
Where are they?
In the central office conference room, so right across the hall from here. The next task force we have focuses on the career pathways, which is the WAVM Chapter 74 program. As you may recall, we were denied approval to move on to stage two of the application, which is okay, it's fine. The professional advisory council has continued to meet, continues to focus on the pieces that they have there. We feel very confident, Principal Carrie Janus and John Ogden, who is the teacher over there for the WAVM program, have worked very hard to get some statistical analysis of labor market statistics, because that is what the department hinged their decision on, that, that's what they said anyway, and so we're gonna make sure that they see our analysis the way we see it, a little differently than they did last year. Mr. Ogden has, however, along with Mr. Minajin, done an incredible job as WAVM has for 50 years, six years, a long, long time, providing local access, radio and TV programming for the town of Maynard. Our students are winning awards both in the state and around the country, they have MHN news broadcasts that we put out on Facebook and that folks have, and please go on, they're trying, they, they track their views, so they wanna make sure that they're getting more viewership. So he's not only doing, "How do I make a newscast?", he's also doing, "How do I get content out to the public? How do I increase my viewership? What are the things that I need to do?" These are incredible skills for anyone going into broadcasting, but also the way in which that that industry is changing, they're being really prepared at the forefront of that work, and we're seeing success in the increasing enrollment and success of the program. So the, that group will be continuing to meet, we anticipate an application to the state in December for Part A. We should know in a month or so whether we've been invited to move on to Part B, which is the part we were denied for last year, and our hope is that we will and that they will approve our program.
So is this something that we had that was taken away, or is this something brand new?
So what we had was the after-school component of WAVM. Over the last two years, we've integrated that into the school day. What we would like to do is seek Chapter 74 vocational program approval, and what that would do is, it would open up a funding stream that we would get a, I don't know if it's quite a per pupil allotment because we're part of, it's complicated, the funding structure of it, but essentially it would give us a funding system that would allow us to replace our equipment in, in more ready fashion than we would if we didn't have that piece, so that we could make sure we have a state-of-the-art equipment. Is the benefit...
So that would be, the money would come from the state?
Yep.
Okay, excellent, very good.
State and federal government through the Perkins in Chapter 74.
Can I tell you how excited John Ogden is and what a pleasure he is to be around with the Ed Foundation? We've, we've been in front of him a few times, and he's just such an enthusiastic teacher, absolutely loves being here and can't say enough good things about him.
He was a great find, and I think we interviewed him while he was in, he was in Europe somewhere when we interviewed him.
He was in Cambodia.
He was in Cambodia, okay.
We Skyped him in.
Yeah, Chuck was in the office here, I was at a training at Asmit Valley, and he was in Cambodia, so it was a 21st century interview.
We've got a lot of great teachers, but I just, like I say, I just tapped into him in his presence recently, so.
He is amazing.
Yeah.
He is absolutely amazing. And the last one is something that we've been talking about as a need, going to some of the pieces that Sharon's school counselor working on. Jeanne LaBelle led part of this initiative last year with the Communications Task Force, where we're gonna be continuing that work. You can see the start date, the purposes of it there, the start date will be in January, and then there will, the way to sign up will be a survey being sent out by the school principal emails, the blog, and also posted on Facebook, and we're excited to, to begin that process again, using some of the work that Ms. LaBelle started last year. And that's it. Chairman Hem.
It sounds like you're gonna go for it.
Yeah, we're doing a lot, we have a great team. We have a great team working really hard.
Sure do.
So, just in the interest of time, I'm gonna suggest that as we dig into this a little further, if any questions, maybe take them online and just follow up with the correct participants in the discussion. So I know that we still have to dive into the MCAS data, and I know that Mark Senofsky's been waiting patiently to share some of that information. You are participating in the conversation, I hope, tonight, right, Mark, as our...
Well, actually, tonight is more about the MCAS, the data report is next, the next meeting.
So we haven't crunched the numbers?
Oh, so MCAS is...
Well, we've crunched the numbers.
Okay.
So MCAS is the meeting in next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And if I could...
So I'm getting ahead of myself then.
Could ask if our principals, if it would be okay with you, Chairman Hem, if they head out since they do your bright and early tomorrow morning?
Good night, everyone.
I respect and thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I don't know how you make any heads and tails out of the MCAS, I was going through them this afternoon, it's like, phew.
Oh, I've got some answers, well, I have, I know some answers, we have some analysis.
Good.
So for the next agenda item, the Department of Ed actually wanted superintents to get this PowerPoint, they prepared the PowerPoint, just to explain about the next generation MCAS. Last spring in 2017 was the first administration of the next generation MCAS, and this is the PowerPoint that goes along with it, I did so you can take notes, at the very end there's gonna be some links that you can also go to for more information. So this is more about the test. At the next school meeting, we're actually gonna have our MCAS report night when we actually talk about test scores. So you can see on the second slide, talks about the different things that we're gonna go over, and then on the third slide, it says, "What is the, what is the next generation MCAS?" And I have a little question for you. Can anybody tell me why you would not wanna allow a student to use a cellphone on a test? Any ideas?
Because you have more computing power in your hands than people who created the atom bomb did?
Any other, any other ideas? Just curious, like why wouldn't you want a student to have a cellphone while they're taking a test?
Can I look up the answer?
Well, I was just gonna say, you can so easily...
Can you look up the answer on your phone, so you would think they might cheat, right?
Sure.
Any other reasons why?
Security issue, like privacy or security or something?
Privacy, or maybe they might share the information with somebody else?
Or take a picture of the test or something and share it, yeah.
So, so the point here is though, that, actually Justin kinda hit it on the head, all the content knowledge that is ever put in writing is in this little computer right here, anybody can access it. And so the new MCAS, the next generation MCAS, the old one that was 20 years old really just focused on content. Well, I can look that up here, right? So the new MCAS really focuses on critical thinking abilities and application of knowledge and connections between reading and writing, and it really does give a clear signal of readiness. So students shouldn't, you know, accessing information through a computer, communicating with each other, those are actually those soft 21st century skills we talked about. It's no longer about the content that's in my hand right now, it's really about the critical thinking skills that we're trying to impart in students, and I think you heard that through some of the presentations earlier as far as our goals on, around writing, how we're trying to make students understand how writing helps them, not just how to write, but how writing helps them. So, you know, I am an advocate for the next generation MCAS because it really is a better test, and it's aligned with the, the international test called PISA that oftentimes we're internationally judged by, and Massachusetts always ends up very high on those international tests. A lot of the rest of our nation doesn't, but that's because our teachers have been teaching some of those critical thinking skills for a long time, even though our tests only measure content knowledge. So it really is a better test, and I am an advocate for it, yes.
Where did we get all the actual physical computers? Like in third grade last year, where did we get 121 computers to administer at the same time?
They had to...
Just like the logistic piece of it?
So each classroom had four, I call them a microwave, they look like kind of a little box, safe type of thing, and each classroom has four computers. Along with that, every pod has a computer Chromebook card, so to make all things fair, it was all done on all Chromebooks, so the access to the library was not part of the MCAS testing. So what happened was the orchestration of taking the actual physical small cases that had the four Chromebook, Chromebooks in them in each classroom was organized by the principal. So in my third grade room, we needed 20 Chromebooks, I had four, and so they came from five other, or four other, five other first grade classrooms, and they were put on, a rolling card by the custodians and brought into my classroom and put on a surge strip and all plugged into one place, made sure that they were all taken care of for the five days that we had MCAS. Then they were all labeled by the classroom teacher, the back of each Chromebook had which card, which little box it went into, and it was my responsibility to make sure that it was plugged in and taken care of every single night. And then the reverse happened, and then they went back to all of the classrooms, and then I think we had a week in between for the math, they were all re-collected again, brought back into the classrooms, all by the custodians, all plugged in, all the same ones were done, and then redistributed back into the classrooms and they were finished.
So logistically, like a huge, I mean, a big puzzle, and so at Green Meadow, there are enough, like the first grade has Chromebooks?
The tech department, the tech department, when we did our 10-year budget, which I think is online, we'll, we'll be updating it for this budget season, with the replacement devices, instead of spending a thousand dollars on a desktop, we spent $250 per Chromebook, and so we were able to essentially get a four-for-one replacement piece, and so we were able to significantly increase the amount of inventory at Green Meadow and at Fowler, and we're doing the same cycle again this year.
So we literally have like 100 and whatever Chromebooks?
Yeah, just so you know, yeah, one person per grade, grades eight through 12, every student, one computer for every student, right? In the lower grades, we have a little over two, for every two and a half students, there's one computer in the district. Now, the grades are taking it at the same time, not the whole school, so that's why we have enough to be able to take the test without actually having one-to-one in the lower grades.
I had no idea there were that many computers at Green Meadow, or Chromebooks, I mean, I know they have the desktops.
So can I ask a follow-up to answer questions? So I think, so yes, that sounds terrible.
It's just logistically like a...
It really wasn't, it wasn't a bad thing, I mean, it really went...
Well, no, 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 it's a lot of work, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, the logistics stuff.
So putting my sympathy aside for a minute, speaking as a parent, how much exposure do the kids get before the third grade access to actually get good at it?
Well, so actually, you're onto my next slide.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't read ahead of the process.
That's okay. The next slide talks about it being a computer-based test, and not every school district did take 100% computer-based tests. Some of them took some paper and pencil tests and some computer-based tests. The question that you asked on is, how are the kids gonna get good at this?
Right.
And we as a district believed that we would start now to see that, because there's something there that they're calling the implementation problem, so if we start now, I'd rather have the kids experience it now before it starts to matter to the kids. So we tried to get 100% of our kids using the computer now so that they get used to using the computer for the test before the accountability provisions kick in and the high-stakes testing kick in for them. So it's really a matter of either you start now or you start later, but you're gonna end up, your kids are gonna be held accountable to understand how to use the computer to take the test.
Right. I just have a huge concern about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
The other piece in that regard, in terms of their, last year's third graders' exposure to online typing, other pieces, we couldn't put devices into Green Meadow until the infrastructure work was done. So we, that, and that was part, when Peter Martin was here as the tech director, Charles Gabron, myself, Jack Colombo, who is now the network administrator, that was part of the rush to get the infrastructure done, to get these devices into the teachers' hands so that the kids could have them, so that we could begin to develop this piece, because we would've been at a significant disadvantage, unlike some of the, the school districts out in the western part of the state that Dr. Girardi was mentioning, we're fortunate to be able to have access to broadband, and, and thankfully, the town was able to see the wisdom of doing that. Certainly one of the things that we will be talking about next week when we go through[1758.63]